I hear a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Call roll please.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Borning?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. Stromdahl?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
We've got a special presentation this evening. Before we get to that, I'd just like to make a quick comment. And I know people don't like to hear elected officials make speeches. So this will be short and sweet. But what I'd like to say is first responders are unique people. They give up their lives and energy and their families to serve the public. And they are very unique. And to say that our recipient tonight is not unique would be an understatement. Ken has been, was unique, he is unique, and he will always be unique. Over my professional career, I've had the opportunity to interview a lot of people. I had the opportunity to interview Ken. And he's the only person that I've interviewed that took a shirt off. And to show me the accident he had on a chainsaw. I still visualize that day and those scars that he carries with him for the past thirty-some years.
Yeah, take it off tonight.
No. But we all have choices in life to make. And I don't know if Ken made the choice to become a firefighter because of that accident. If he did, that's fantastic. If he did tell me in the hallway he still uses his chainsaw, and I hope he used it a lot safer than the last time. So would you come up front, please? This proclamation, Titusville, Pennsylvania for Kenneth Willier. Whereas I had the opportunity and pleasure of hiring Kenneth Willier as a minute man for the Titusville Fire Department on February 4th, nineteen ninety. And whereas Ken was promoted to full-time status on December 29th, nineteen ninety-nine. And whereas Ken was promoted to the rank of lieutenant on December 9th, two thousand one. And whereas over the past thirty years, Ken has responded to approximately six thousand fire and health emergency calls. And whereas Ken has decided to hang up his turn-up gear for the last time by retiring at the end of his regular shift tomorrow, February 4th, two thousand twenty. Now therefore, I, Dennis E. Payton, Mayor of the City of Titusville, on behalf of the members of city council and the citizens of Titusville and the surrounding area, extend a sincere thank you and congratulations to Ken for his dedicated service over the past thirty years. And further proclaim February 4th, two thousand twenty, as the day that Titusville Fire Department lost a true first responder. Proclaim this third day of February in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty. Congratulations. Marshall, can you come up? They always say that behind a good man is a better woman. Marshall's been beside Ken's side, I think he told me, thirty-three years?
Almost thirty-five.
Almost thirty-five years. And for him to go to work and their family losing out on birthdays and holidays and weekends because of shift work, I don't know, Ken, if he could have done it without the support of Marshall. And Marshall, on behalf of the city and the force and the residents of this community, I also thank you.
On behalf of the city, we'd like to present you with a stick here.
Congratulations.
Oh, sure. I think the member of council wants to make a note.
And everyone else just moved up on slide C. Ken, I would like to express to you my appreciation. My appreciation of your service, my appreciation of you as a gentleman. We both know that many times my elderly mother has required some help. And the ambulance would be called, and the fire department is there. And you were always there, as well with the rest of you firemen. Whether you were on call that night or not, I know that you're always there. So I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. My mother appreciates your help, too. Very nice.
Do you have any comments?
No, I just, I'm Ken for a while, appreciate everything you've done. Congratulations on your time.
Thank you.
I'm always grateful for the service of our firemen and Mr. Willier. I would extend my personal appreciation to you for your years of service and the city.
And then we get to see him use his chainsaw about a year ago when Mr. Bromner's trees fell on the top of the porch.
I tell you what, if that would have happened, I was telling the story, I cut my three fingers with a mini bat that I borrowed and had to buy a new chain for. And then the last branch I cut, I cut my fingers almost off. And I never went near another chainsaw. So Ken, be careful. All right, guys, you're welcome to stay, but it would be helpful if the station was manned. But you can stay.
No.
Okay. Thanks for being here.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Who's Ken's partner?
The Sherwin.
Ah, the Sherwin. Take care of them tomorrow.
I certainly will.
All right, thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Mark? What do you, he thanked you for his pension. Okay, we changed on the agenda. At this time, we have Mark Melonbacher, the plan administrator for the fire and police pension. Thursday, there was a police and fire pension board meeting. And I'd asked Mark to come here and just give all members of council and the public an update.
Thank you. Thanks for having me here tonight. As most accounting geeks would do, I'm handing out an Excel spreadsheet so you can see some of the numbers that I thought were relevant. Feel free to call me anytime you want to, for further explanation. I'll give you an overview of each of the plans, as much as you want, as little as you want. I won't take too much time. Everybody got one? There's one for the police and one for the fire. So if we start with the, with the firemen. I kind of put together some numbers from two thousand and twelve through two thousand and nineteen. I have what you call non-investment income. That would be the MMO, which is the minimum municipal obligation, and then fireman contributions for each year. Then the main expenses, which are the payments to the retirees and the other expenses, which are things like actuary, my fees, investment fees. So then we have total expenses, and then I have expenses over non-investment income. That's what I called it. So if you just simply take the money that the city puts into the plan, the money the firemen put into the plan, and subtract the payments out before the investment results. So we have a big pool of investments with the fire and police plan. The fire plan had three point six million dollars at the end of the year. But not counting the investment results, for example, in two thousand and nineteen, we had a forty-eight thousand dollar excess of expenses over revenues. That's primarily because if you go up to the top of nineteen, you see the MMO is three hundred and thirty thousand. If you back up a year, it was one hundred and eighty-nine. So it went up a lot, but then our, you know, if you look at that bottom line down there, it was a minus one fifty-four in eighteen, and so it's only a minus fifty because this, the MMO was so much higher. I then gave you the investment market value for each year back to twelve. And then I gave you the lowest one that I have record of, which was two thousand and eight when we had the big correction. So in two thousand and eight, we had one point nine in here, and now we have three point six. That's in spite of that non-investment draw every year, as you see them there. I totaled them up, I didn't put them on your sheet, but those, over the twelve, two thousand and twelve to nineteen, it was eight hundred thousand dollars of draw. Yet the account went up one point one million. So that's a pretty nice thing to have happen. I gave you the investment returns for each year, they're listed there. And I gave you the benchmark. That's what the pension board looks at to see that they're doing their job. Okay? So for example, in nineteen, we actually had a twenty-two point six-one investment return. And the benchmark was twenty point eight-one. So they outperformed the benchmark. Then the last thing I thought might be of interest to you is there's nineteen, there's nineteen retirees as of the end of the year. And their average benefit, if you divide the total payments to retirees by nineteen, is sixteen hundred and seventy-six dollars. So some receive very little, some receive more than that. And there it is, going back over the years. The police and fire pension plans are audited by the Audit General's Office every couple of years and by your city auditors every year. Okay? So I thought I would just give you what I thought you might already know, but the fireman pension plan is about seventy percent funded. I'm taking this information from the January one actuarial report, okay? So we're about seventy percent funded. The only statistics I could find were the two thousand and sixteen Pennsylvania pension plans. They were on average sixty-five percent funded. So we're a little bit better than the state as of sixteen. So, but we're thirty percent underfunded, which is about one point three million dollars. So what they, actuary does is they'll take that one point three million dollars and they'll do their little tricks to it. And they'll decide that you need your MMO to be at a certain level to pick that back up over a certain number of years. They look at, and I don't want to put myself in an actuary class because they're worse than accountants. They're really boring, so we're next to them. But they'll look at your pool of the guys that were here and what the present value or what their benefit might look like. The present value of the benefit of the people that are collecting currently, their spouses, their ages, all that stuff. They add it together and say, you should have this much money in your pension plan, and you have this much. So you're one point three short. And we'll divide that out and we'll come up with your MMO. One of the things that impacts that greatly is the investment performance. So when they redo the actuarial report this year, I would suspect that, if I had, I tried to just guess, because I don't know their actuarial science, but I think we might go from seventy to upper seventy percent funded.
We were somewhere around sixty-eight before.
Mm-hmm. The police is at sixty-nine, and this one's at seventy. So I, I think it could go to mid to upper seventy percent funded. Okay? Just, do you want me to touch, just, go ahead, Nick.
I have a question. How is the benchmark established?
So the benchmark is a little bit different between the fire and the police, which scratches, I scratch my head a little bit on it, we always have.
Yeah.
But they take blended rates from different types of investment pools, like a bond fund. So they have an investment policy that they have to follow, the investors. And it says you can't have more than this much in stocks, and therefore you would have no more than this much in bonds. We give them some parameters to work in. And then they take little percentages of these different ratios that are out there. So like the, I think the Dow performed at about twenty-six percent, twenty-six, twenty-seven percent. Well, your pension fund should not be doing that. That would be one hundred percent invested in stocks. So it should be a lot more conservative than that. Twenty-two, not too bad. But yeah, it's a, it's a blended benchmark of, okay?
Well, that cleared it up.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like the IFA and the S and the D.
Just noticing the benchmark on fire here, it just seems to go up and down.
Well, they go up and down based on the market. So what they're basically saying is this year, if the Dow went up twenty-six percent, an account like this should have only went up twenty point ninety-one. And they actually performed at twenty-two. In eighteen, the market went down. And the benchmark should have only went down three point nine-eight percent. They went down four point two-nine percent. So they did a little bit worse. If you go back to seventeen, just the opposite.
Right.
They're saying that based on the types of investments that they're holding, they should have went up fourteen point six-six at least in twelve, and they went up seventeen point nine-two.
Now, I looked on, on the internet today and saw the report from the Attorney General, I think the one you referred to. And there were three classifications, moderately distressed, you know.
Yes.
But at seventy percent, that seems to be at the lowest distress factor.
That's, that's better than like-
I can't remember how they-
Yeah, I think sixty-nine and eight, you were starting to get to the next distress that they didn't like. Yeah.
I think seventy brought it up to the, the first level.
Yes.
Okay.
Which means they don't force remedies on you.
Right.
Okay?
And that, one point three million underfunded, is that over the life of, if you had no changes from here on out, or?
Yeah, that would be, they're, they're saying that based on the mix of the plan right now, the ones that are gonna retire and the ones that are retired, and how old their spouses are, and how much money they make, and they, they go at it. They're basically saying that they think we should have four point five in there. And we have three point one? Three points, well, we had three point one at the beginning of the year. See, now we have three point six. That's why I think you're gonna be more funded when this thing's done. So based on their calculation of what should be in there, we're short of that. And on average, the state is a little bit shorter than us.
Mark, doesn't that usually go back three years in what the percentage had? Because last year, we came in and we were somewhere, when I was on the board, we were lower sevens as far as our, and then what happened here is because in eighteen and all the political stuff and the economy kind of tanked a little bit, therefore it shoved us down to sixty-eight and put us into another category where we had no option.
Right.
And so therefore, they dictated to us. And I guess what you're saying here is as long as the markets keep running pretty well, our commitments, our obligated commitments can be somewhat lower, which they can maintain.
I bet. I mean, I think the actuarial assumptions, like eight percent?
Yeah, you have a minimum, but yeah.
When they do their calculations, they think you should get eight, which is pretty aggressive.
And, and the other thing, when I think Danny was talking about here benchmarks, I remember to, the benchmarks of the two different funds depends whether one is using the benchmark Russell Standard or Russell five hundred, or whether they're using, you know, and that's one of the things you and I have talked about, whether it depends on what they're invested in and, so two benchmarks.
Yes.
It makes it difficult.
Yeah, like the, the police had a benchmark that was two point six-five percent for this year, and the fires was two point eight-one. So one of the things we kind of do at times is we also look at each other as to, because it's two different investment places, Northwest Savings and Presque Isle Investment up on Erie. So we kind of watch what each one's doing, and they're pretty close to each other, and they beat the benchmark. Those are important things to the board.
Do you know what the, what the actual percentage would be without, I know we can't do this, but I'm just interested. Without the city's three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in there? Because it looks like it, it went up a half a million dollars, but three hundred and thirty of that was our contribution.
Correct.
Okay.
You're right. If you went to last year, though, it went down three hundred thousand after you put in a hundred and ninety.
Right. Right.
So we would add a fifth, five hundred thousand dollar deficiency instead of a hundred and fifty-four.
How, how, how do we get this to go in the right direction other than just continually increasing our dollar? Because the, the dollar amounts aren't gonna be there. Does it, does it eventually have to involve labor negotiations as far as retirement schedules?
Yeah, that's a loaded question for a plan administrator.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
You've known me a long time.
Yeah, that's all right. If the market gets twenty-two percent a year, you'll be there in no time.
Okay.
That's not gonna happen.
No.
Right? We went up a million bucks. So if we're one point three underfunded, we'd be in pretty good shape with a couple more twenty-twos.
Right.
But if, if what you're projecting that will be possibly mid-seventies for this year, probably the MMO would come down.
Correct.
Rather than if we kept the MMO at the same in a year like that to help boost.
Right. Right.
And how long have you been administering this?
I thought you, someone would probably ask you that. It's been a long time, I would say.
First out of college.
No. Like fifteen years or so?
So I've noticed in these pension plans that they just passed us out tonight. They went with new pension plans in two thousand and thirteen, or what happened?
They changed the, the, the agreement. The plan document. Yes, thanks. They just made some changes to the plan document. It was suggested, I think, by the Auditor General. But some of it was tough for me to interpret, too. And so we cleared up some of the language. We didn't change much. They have made changes over the years to, like, there's a group of firemen that get COLAs, but most of them don't. There's some that can retire. Now it's fifty in twenty-five years, where maybe it used to be just twenty years. So those types of things have been changed, and that, those go towards Danny, what you're saying. Someone gets out after twenty years and they're forty years old.
They're there for a long time.
They're for a long time.
But we don't want sixty-year-old people fighting fires, do you?
Bet you. Or policemen.
Or policemen, right.
It's hard for me to say, because I'm older than that.
So am I.
I, I couldn't fight a fire. I could just give you just a little bit from the plan document if you want. Unless you're just looking for stats, I could give you just a couple of-
Your fingers.
That's good.
It's just a couple of-
Yeah, I like the numbers. Okay.
Okay, just a couple of things. For example, firemen, completion of twenty years of service, they retire at fifty percent of their pay. It's based on their final month of employment or their last five years, whichever is higher.
We're still on fire.
Fire.
Okay. And when you say based on their income, base income?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's about twenty years.
Yeah, it's not included overtime.
No, just hollering and yelling.
The fire does have a one thousand dollar death benefit to a spouse or underage child. Police doesn't have that. So like I said, guys that retired from ninety-seven to two thousand are getting little COLAs. Everybody else gets a little COLA. It's not much. They're vested after seven years. And they contribute about eight percent of their pay plus a dollar. Okay? Compared to the fire, which is pretty similar. I'm sorry, the police. The police are basically fifty, age fifty in twenty-five years. It used to be twenty. Fifty in twenty. They also are fifty percent of their pay. They vest after seven years. They contribute seven, seven percent of their pay plus a dollar. Okay? Now, the police-
Mark, fifty percent of their pay based on the largest quarter or?
Their final play, pay or the last five-year average. It's a, right, is that sound right to you, Daniel?
Unless they get the DRO. They get the DRO, then they get bumped up forty percent, and then take fifty percent of that increase forty percent.
The review officer is back in the contract?
No.
Not?
No, it was taken. We have one, one left that can take that.
What's that?
We have one left on staff that can still take advantage of that.
Okay. Thank you.
The, the police, the police plan is like two point seven underfunded. And so they were about sixty-eight percent funded. And they had a good year, too, so. But I, the plan has a lot more assets in it. I would say they might go up into the low seventies funded. Where the firemen might go into mid to upper seventies funded. And on their little sheet there, you can see that their MMO is higher, but they had quite a bit of expense over MMO and fireman contribution or police contribution. So this year, when you see that minus one ninety-six, what that means is I had to ask the investment account for a hundred, for two hundred thousand dollars to get by, to make the payments to the retirees out of their resolves. They still went up one point one million dollars in spite of giving me two hundred. So they had a pretty nice year. So did the firemen, actually had a little bit better return. It's just dollars, because it's, they're-
And which fund is with Northwest and which is with?
Northwest is with the police. So you see, they have twenty-two people in the, in the plan compared to nineteen. Their average is twenty-three fifty-seven compared to sixteen seventy-six in fire. So I thought those were maybe some of the stats that you guys were looking for. Okay? Again, feel free to call me if you have questions as you look that over.
Do we have a lot of surviving spouses on these, on both of these?
Yes.
Which probably aren't collecting a lot of money.
Some of the older ones are not.
Yeah.
The, the actuarial report spells it right out. It tells you how many are surviving spouses. They know their ages, they got, they have to factor all that in to come up with your amount.
So basically, we're looking at one point three and two point seven, so about four million dollars.
Underfunded.
I'll check that tomorrow.
Yeah. Which again, I'm saying is better than the state, not that that makes you feel any better about it. But you're better off than a lot of places in the country.
As, as comparison, I don't know if this is still true, but you know, like, the Pennsylvania state teachers were somewhere around forty-five, forty-eight percent funded.
Could be.
It's, and not saying that makes it right for us, but just saying we really aren't doing that bad compared to a lot of the others.
Only a third of our house is burned down.
Yeah.
Well.
If you've got the cash.
Yeah. Any other questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
Well, thanks for letting me serve you guys in this capacity and-
Thank you.
It's been good. It's convenient, it's convenient for the retirees and the city, I think, to have it done by the local administrator. That's my pitch for us.
Good.
Thank you.
If we get too tight, we'll just, you can donate your fees.
Yeah, it won't bring you up to your funded amount.
Right, right, right. Thanks, Mark. Public participation on uh pertaining to agenda items. Yes, sir.
James Allen.
Dan, state your name.
Three oh six North Franklin Street, I was just wondering if you could tell me how old Ken Lulier was when he retired or his age was?
Well, Marcia's my age.
Well, she's my dad's age as well, so I don't know.
I would say, I don't know how old Ken is. I would say he's about the same age.
Well, you had said that you didn't want any firemen at sixty and I was just wondering how old Ken was, he just retired.
I bet he, I bet he's in his sixties.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? Managers report.
Good evening, council. I supplied you all with a copy of the managers' report. Uh the first item on the managers' report is the Diamond Street update. Uh safety fence, safety fence scaffolding with roof and the signage uh was installed on January thirtieth last week. Uh that was done for the safety of the public. Uh I want to thank the Public Works and Tim Lorenz for all working together. Uh we were able to get that up quickly. Uh Public Works did a great job installing it to the sidewalk. And I also have underneath this Diamond Street update, just the status of our previous agreement. I know we talked about that last week. That was the previous agreement and release from the solicitor and just didn't know, didn't touch on that.
Sure, okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
What kind of response did you have from the business owners?
As far as.
As when you went down to, you know, eliminate parking and whatever.
The response from from was fantastic. Uh nobody had a negative complaint about it, they were actually glad something went up there. Um I haven't got any complaints as far as two of the parking spots being taken away. Um so it's been nothing but positive response from business owners in that block.
On Facebook too, if you're running.
No. Go ahead.
Okay, uh. Number two is the fire department renovation update. We had a meeting last week on January twenty-ninth, the city hall. It was myself, fire chief, contractor, the engineer and finance director. Uh we basically just got together to discuss the status, uh to make sure we were all on the same page, uh to see where we're at with renovations. Any issues that we were having. Uh the contractor did tell us that it was about approximate three week, um three weeks were left of the project. They anticipated it to be done. Um obviously the nice weather helps as well, just getting things done quicker. So that's the update on the fire department.
Is that on time? Did we make it on time?
I believe so. Uh Diane, I don't know, um from the beginning.
Uh the original was two weeks to have an undercover, which was delayed by trusses and like.
Yeah. Uh, sorry. Uh the next item is the senior center lease agreement. Um I supplied council with a kind of a brief overview of the meeting that was held last week on the twenty-ninth. Uh with myself, uh and solicitor, uh Tim Snyder representing the senior center and also a representative of the senior center. Uh we sat down, kind of went over what the current lease is, uh some of the concerns that they had. If you would like me to go over some of the details or if you have any questions in regards to the handout that we provided council this evening.
I guess I I looked at it as it was uh nice to see that they weren't negotiating and they didn't ask for the move.
Correct.
Um and I read that totally wrong. I I thought they wanted a thousand dollar reduction. I can't believe that, because Jim's gonna yell at me about, you know, the jolies. So uh but I think uh, you know. I think what they would like to do, I would have no problem with it. The lady that cleans city hall and the police station, um if she wanted more hours, that might be a possibility for us to just hire her. But I did have a concern, we're only cleaning city hall and the police station once a week?
Once a month.
Once a month?
Wow.
We pretty much take her own trash out.
Yeah, but you know, you got all those, you got all those policemen up there at bathrooms and.
I do have, I do have a call in to clean, uh the cleaning lady. Uh to talk to her and see what her thoughts are on senior center and what options there is.
Are you thinking that we pay her to clean and move or reducing or?
What's my thought would be just to go, what they are asking for, that they're willing to pay a thousand dollars. Which will more than pay for our utilities. And then we we give our cleaning lady the twenty hours, that's that's a hundred and forty bucks. So we're still ahead and have her clean down TikTok. And and then when we buy paper towel, we just add a couple more rolls. I think, I think their willingness to pay a thousand dollars is, I that surprised me.
And they take care of the kitchen themselves?
Yeah, they do the kitchen. So all we're doing is the floor and restroom. Now the tennis team using the bathroom as a locker room, that's a different issue.
Yeah, that'd be something we can work with the school with and if I remember correctly, before leisure service was was gone, they did all the cleaning in there and supplied all the supplies.
That's that's where I was coming from.
I'm just thinking that while I'm here. It gets big up just here. No, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking myself here, the the tennis team changing, they changing the restroom and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Wouldn't want to change it outside.
We we do have a shelter outside there that I think is for storage, but I don't know whether that could be turned in.
That could be a conversation with the school.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, or we can turn that into something.
Do you need a a motion to approve that?
It's it's not on the agenda, but if if everybody on council agreed to put it on the agenda, we could vote on it.
Yeah.
Anybody have a problem putting this on the agenda?
But for the Shaggy now, huh?
No, talking about the agreement.
The agreement, are you okay with that?
We can put it on here.
You okay? Okay. All right, now we'll entertain whatever council would like to do with this.
I'd make a motion that we uh enter into this agreement as written uh by the solicitor and agree to the senior center.
Do I hear a second?
Oh, I'll second it.
Discussion. So we're gonna, we're basically agreeing on a thousand dollars a month. The city will buy paper products and the city will provide twenty hours of cleaning. Okay? Any other discussion? Roll please.
Twenty hours, twenty hours a week, a month?
Uh was it, was that twenty hours a month or twenty hours a week?
It was twenty hours a week at seven and a quarters, what the senior center was paying their cleaning person currently.
Well, when we're uh, when we're cleaning the police station once a month, you know, twenty hours may seem excessive. For just the, they don't do the kitchen.
No, the seniors take care of the kitchen.
Right.
Twenty hours a month?
That's fine, just get into it.
Yeah, yeah, twenty hours a month. Would you?
I'll amend it.
Will you amend it, will you second it?
Sure.
Okay, all right, any further discussion, thanks for bringing it up. Call roll please.
Mr. Peyton?
Yes.
Mr. Stromdahl?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is uh I have scheduled for February tenth, uh next week's work session, uh presentation from Felix and Goltler. Uh they were, they will provide counsel to the public and of the audit, of the audit service they provide to the city and answer questions as well. That's scheduled for February tenth, next week, work session seven P M. Uh the next item is the waterworks update, uh giving you a status of a quote for the telemetry, uh we were waiting on that last week. Uh at the end of the day today, I did hear from the public works director, um we have a quote for the material of seven thousand one hundred dollars. Uh the labor's gonna be four thousand five hundred dollars for a total cost of eleven thousand six hundred dollars. Uh just a, just a review on that, the waterworks were having issues with communications between uh the waterworks and the pump station on petroleum street. Uh solution would be to install an antenna on central towers to transmission, transmit a radio signal from waterworks to petroleum street. Uh they did the test last Wednesday, uh the test came back uh clear, they had good communication uh when they put that in place. Um so right now, the estimate is about eleven thousand six hundred dollars total, um according to the public works director. That work would, work would be done by Kepler, who's done uh quite a bit of work down at waterworks, uh distributing with the setup.
Where are the drum?
Kepler is from, I believe, Waterford.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Uh number six on the manager's report, the Old Creek Township Agreement, I see that's later new business, we can address that then, if you'd like.
Okay.
Um the last item is um the twenty twenty professional development leadership training that I was able to attend Thursday through Saturday with two council members. Um the topics concluded at the seminar were emotional intelligence, eth- ethics, fiscal management and labor and employment essentials. Uh it was a very beneficial uh to hear all the information that they provided. Um one of the other great things about it was networking with the other cities to hear what some of the things that they do and some of the problems they encounter. A lot of things that we can relate here, they can also relate, um so it was a very, very informative. And that's.
I'm sorry, Neil, may- maybe I missed it when I was taking notes, uh the status of the drive unit or?
Yeah, I'm sorry, status of the drive unit is, uh we should have that next week. Uh the installation for that will be approximately two days and then it'll be up and running.
Thank you. Motion to accept the manager's report?
Make that motion.
I second it.
Discussion.
Thank you, Neil.
Call roll please.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Peyton?
Uh yes.
Mr. Stromdahl?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Old business, boards and commission appointments. Uh ratification, I'm sorry, I crossed things off too quick. We don't want to pay any bills tonight.
The controller hasn't signed the two most recent warrants we have yet, so.
She has?
She has.
She's not, okay. But we do have, we have some that she has signed.
December.
Decembers?
Neil talked to her about those.
Yeah, that's uh I spoke to her and everything was approved. There was no issues with December's bills.
So we, we tabled it.
Yeah, I think we talked about that last week.
So do we have a signature on those then?
Yes.
Okay. The December bill listing, correct, Diane?
Uh they were.
Came to like nine hundred eighty-seven thousand.
Twelve twenty, twelve twenty-seven, one three, one ten and one seventeen.
And they're all signed by the controller? Okay. Council's pleasure.
Motion to ratify those things.
Motion by Mr. Frazier.
I'll second it.
Mr. Crouch, second, discussion?
So after we get the controller to sign these ones, then we'll do Januaries, is that what you want to do?
Yeah, we want the controller to sign off.
Okay.
Any discussion?
What's the total amount of all the stuff you have sitting there in front of you?
It was like nine hundred eighty-seven thousand.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, but isn't this more, no?
No.
If anybody wants to add, I'm not gonna add without a machine.
It's the same one.
Twenty thousand eight fifty-eight, seventy thousand six ninety-six, twenty-seven thousand oh twenty-six, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand four and one twelve seven forty-one.
Yes, more.
Those are the ones that we don't already see.
Correct. Even the seventeenth one, right?
Yes.
All right, there's been a motion, a second, any other discussion? Call roll please.
Mr. Stromdahl?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Peyton?
Yes. Now all this, sports and committees. Who do we have to call?
I have six um applications for the airport advisory board, six or seven. Six. Six.
I think we have one for the Voca code.
Yes, we have one for the uh Voca and then we also have one for civil service commission, Mr. Frye. Uh I did speak to him last week, uh he just needs uh voted.
All right.
So we can get that started obviously with the fire department.
Can we deal with these before we appoint the board?
No.
Okay. We have Steve Burdick for the Voca code. Uh and we have uh John Frye for civil service commission. Uh Steve is reappointment. And my, Diane, I'm correct in saying, we didn't have anybody within the city applying, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you don't have to have, you don't have to be within the city.
Yeah, that is, they're just, and then John Frye, I think everybody sitting here knows John Frye, so. Do I hear a motion to appoint these two gentlemen? Steve, go ahead.
I move.
I second.
Any discussion? Call roll please.
Mr. Stromdahl?
Yes.
Mr. Peyton?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
I will make a comment that we need to get the civil service commission uh together ASAP. Uh with Ken retiring, the fire department is at a very low number of individuals. We need volunteers, so we need to get that advertised.
Yes.
New business and uh individuals that are in attendance tonight, if you remember. Uh we are allowing comments or questions on new business as we take them up. Uh the first item is resolution number three. Uh it is repealing resolution fifteen of two thousand fourteen special event approval. Um what that means is anybody wishing to have a special event in the city of Titusville will come before city council for approval. It takes the uh total responsibility out of the city manager's office. And I, and I believe it allows uh those organizations a little bit of PR uh coming before making their case, so. Uh if anybody has any questions on that at this time, if not, council, uh your pleasure.
I make a motion, we adopt.
Motion.
As so written.
Do I hear a second? Second.
Can I just say something?
Yeah.
No.
I just uh, I just hate to see the council micromanage this. I think uh the, for convenience for the public, the, you know, city hall's open every day, all day long and the city manager, I think, is very capable of handling this. If they have safety concerns or anything like that, with, you know, if you have the ability to check with the department chair, it's, so this is my opinion.
Well, taken. Go on.
I agree, I agree with Jim, it was set up to uh, that you, there are times that some of these came just days in advance. And so it was very expedient, expedient to take and uh address those as well as if the city manager needed to look into the fire, please, the public works.
Well, I don't think it, and I, and I appreciate your input, but I don't see that changing either. Uh but uh again, there's uh, as I said, we met with a lot of organizations and one of the biggest issues was there was conflicts with city hall and getting their special events taken care of and so on and so. This takes it out of the response, in my opinion, it takes it out of the responsibility out of one individual, so uh that's where I come from. Any other discussion?
Is there any requirement currently that an application must be made so many days in advance of an event?
Sixty.
Sixty days?
So that's not gonna be a two-week thing.
So it should, um. So it should, um, eliminate that concern of that.
I have another question. Didn't it used to be this way?
Yeah, it's gone back and forth.
Okay.
I know years ago, it was this, the old way, up until a couple of years ago, it was the old way, it, it's kind of.
It used to be a committee that was made up of fire chief, police chief, public works director, and they all commented and then brought it to council, council.
Yeah, yeah.
This, this gives PR to this one.
Uh, yeah, so it's, it's flip-flopped back and forth a lot, so. Any other questions, comments? Call roll, please.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
No.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Stromdahl?
No.
Resolution Number Four of twenty twenty Airport Advisory Board, that is a resolution creating, uh, the board overseeing the Titusville Airport. Any comments, questions?
Item four has Federal Aviation Authority actually, the FAA is the administration, but, um, that's just the typo, I suppose. Then we also talk about, like, seven members. And then six of them, and, and I just, you know, one of them's gonna be a councilperson, so I don't know how in three that we end up adding these up here, because a, a councilperson could have a, you gotta pick him for, him or her, I give him, uh, for a term of five years, and, you know.
It's seven members plus a councilperson.
That's not what it says.
Where are you reading that, Don?
Item two.
What's that, number two? Advisory Board shall be comprised of seven members, one of whom shall be a member of the city council, uh, the city Titusville appointed by council, remaining six. Yeah, it, it should read seven members, and then the, the eighth member would actually be the, the.
You don't want a odd number of members?
Seven members. The council member wouldn't have a vote.
Council member would have, the way this reads, it would, I would think.
Yeah, the council member would have a vote.
Okay.
Thanks for bringing that up.
And personally, myself, I, that's a lot of members. A lot of ideas floating around, and how much work can get done.
So that's positive also.
Jim, comments, questions?
No, I, I think that needs changing.
Yeah.
Uh, so basically, we're changing C, right, so that, the, the council member would be what, an ex officio member, or, okay.
Well, he wouldn't have years attached to it, because it'd only be as long as he was a constable.
Right.
Or, or council changes, you know, so I don't know why we'd do council, you know, that term.
Yeah.
Same as saying it just didn't add up.
Yeah.
All right, so, not to keep delaying this, with the changes, would I, could I have a motion to approve or not approve this resolution? Based on the revisions that Councilman Frazier brought up, uh, on item two?
Which reflects in the three.
Right.
Say it again?
Which reflects in the three, but which in the three, right.
Oh, yeah, okay. I'll make a motion to accept it with the changes.
I have a second then. Discussion. So, we're good, Rich, with, you know what?
I know what the changes are, yeah, I'll make them.
Jim, any comments?
No.
Go on.
Will we take and put something out to advertise for more applicants and stuff like that?
We could.
I don't know that we need to, since we already did that, we've been doing it since we started this a few weeks ago, we already got, we actually got seven. I forgot the four, then, that seventh one there, we already got seven applicants, I don't see why we need to do any more.
Well, you have in here, city residency is not a requirement, so I don't know whether everybody reads the paper or they come here, so.
I'm good with what we received.
Any other questions on the resolution?
Larry Emerson, with Point West Florida speaking, could you read the whole resolution for the audience?
Sure.
Thank you.
A resolution to the city council, uh, the city of Titusville, Proctor County, Pennsylvania, to create a board to be known as the Titusville Airport Advisory Board. Whereas the city of Titusville owns and operates the Titusville Airport located in Cherry Tree Township, in Angler County, Pennsylvania, and in Oil Creek Township, Proctor County, Pennsylvania. Whereas pursuant to section, uh, one two four zero six of the Third Class City Code, the city council of the city of Titusville has the authority to establish any city office, public board, bureau, or commission which is deemed necessary for the good of government and in, and in the interest of the city. Whereas the city council of the city of Titusville deems it necessary for the good of the government and the best interest of the city to form the Titusville Airport Advisory Board, now therefore be resolved. City council hereby creates a board to be known as the Titusville Airport Advisory Board. The Titusville Airport Advisory Board shall be comprised of seven members, uh, one of, of whom shall be a member of city council, uh, the city Titusville appointed by council as an ex officio member. And the remaining, uh, seven of whom will be appointed by the city council of the city of Titusville from among the applicants interested in serving on the Titusville Airport Advisory Board. City residency is not required. The term of service of members of the Titusville Airport Advisory Board shall be, two members shall serve a term of one year, two members shall serve for a term of three years, three members shall serve for a term of five years. The purpose of the Titusville Airport Advisory Board shall be to make recommendations on airport operations and render advice on the efficient operation thereof to the city, uh, council and the city manager to determine the best term method of operation of the Titusville Airport and to provide advice in other areas as requested by the city council. Members of the Titusville Airport Advisory Board shall have a working knowledge of applicable federal aviation authority, it, it, was that?
Administration.
Administration. And Pennsylvania Bureau, Bureau of Aviation Rules and Regulations. The city of Titusville shall retain sole responsibility for all financial matters related to the Titusville Airport, for retention of auditors, and for all billing and collection of sums owed to the Titusville Airport. The duration of the Titusville Airport Advisory Board shall be until city council takes further action to, uh, to terminate its existence. All resolutions consistent with this resolution are hereby repealed. This resolution shall take effect immediately, and that's what it's signed. Okay?
Just have the mayor, may I say something here?
Okay.
I think that it's time for, this is one of the things we can do to help heal some of the relationships in the city. I know when I was running for city council, this was a big deal among residents in the city, that it, sometimes things are what they seem, maybe not what exactly happened, but to the citizens of the city of Titusville, it seemed like we had a little bit of a hostile takeover of the airport, and so I don't think we should delay putting this board together for months on end. I think we need to, uh, after we adapt this, I think we need to move forward so people can start working together, we, we've been without a manager out there for a while, so.
Any other comments? Roger?
Uh, personally, I think, just from a matter of due process.
Yeah.
That it's inappropriate to form a board that we then appoint on the same meeting. Uh, but it's, that we appoint the board members to it in the same meeting. I think we do need to, uh, have the opportunity legally to advertise for this.
Okay. Jim? Don? All right, so, any other discussion? So we have a motion on the floor to accept the resolution with the corrections made to item number two, item number three, and item number four. Get all those, Rich?
I did.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion?
I think that if that's the case, then I think we need to nail down what is the open time of this and when we're gonna, when we're gonna vote on it.
Let's answer that question after we take the vote of this.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, call roll, please.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. Stromdahl?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
No.
All right. All right, so, on the, um, Roger, would you, would you like to communicate what you would like to see done with applicants?
I think we just need some period of open advertising, um. We can't appoint a work session.
Right.
Uh, so I would say that, uh, whatever the Friday is prior to our next voting meeting, be the deadline to receive applications.
Okay, I think our next voting meeting is the seventeenth. So, fourteenth would be the last day.
Valentine's Day.
Yeah. If somebody has a calendar, I think that's right.
I think that's right.
Everybody agree with that?
Yeah, I'm ready to, I'm ready to press forward, but I can, I can.
All right.
I can go with it.
Resolution Number Five. Resolution Number Five authorizes the TRA to administer, administer the CDVG on behalf of the city.
Can I, can I go back to one thing for clarification on what we just did? If, if we're gonna close on that Friday before, let's say we have fifty applicants, we're, we're gonna bring them all before, so what are we gonna do?
I would, I would recommend that the city ma-, interim city manager review them and make recommendations to us.
Oh, yeah, that's what you want.
You do?
Okay. Uh, question, what, you wanted to advertise this in the Titusville paper or the Derrick, Meville paper? As far as advertising for?
I'd say probably at least Meville, because that's kind of, Meville's kind of in that area.
No, I, I would say Derrick.
Do you see it? Okay, so all three.
Oh, we had a chair here.
All three papers?
Yeah. I can't imagine a few people would be interested.
Right.
Well, you know, optimistic.
Neil, do you have Resolution Number Five in front of you?
Uh, shh, shh, shh.
I don't, do you need it?
It just doesn't have a number on it.
We have it, it's everything.
Any public, uh, questions about this resolution?
I have one, Mayor, did you ever find out about the tax dollars that were paid to the city?
I did not.
Okay. Thank you.
Neil, could you find out from, uh, Lori, redevelopment, the taxes paid, and, uh?
He could get it from the treasurer, from Doug Thompson, should have that information, instead of calling Lori Baker, he could get it in-house.
You could get it through Wright and Doug, too.
I shouldn't have to, it's public information.
Right, I understand.
I called the county and they told me over the phone, I shouldn't have to do that in the city.
Well, if you, if you got it from the county, why?
No, they gave me the county portion, not the city portion.
Okay, okay.
The city collects the city, the county collects the county.
Well, Neil?
Yes.
Can you make sure you get that information?
Sure, will.
And get it to Mr. Elliott tomorrow.
Thank you.
Any questions on Resolution Number Five? Do you hear a motion to accept or reject?
I make a motion to, uh, accept Resolution Number Five authorizing, authorizing TRA to administer the CDVG funds on behalf of the city.
I'm just a little concerned about their manpower, I mean, do they have the people to, to do it?
I certainly indicated to us that they do.
For fifty years, they were able to handle it, so I'm assuming that they would have to do whatever they.
You actually have a better, you, you have other people.
Yeah.
Now you have one maintenance guy and three ladies working it up.
You're talking about the, the TRA?
Yeah. I'm just curious as to how they would, you know, the city's gonna have to handle it anyway, this, you know.
I'll second the motion.
Tom, Tom?
Um, I stressed, I've said this before, I don't think that's the way we need to go, is at least seventy grand coming out of, uh, possibility of, uh.
How much?
About, almost seventy grand, you have eight, a minimum of eighteen percent out of, uh, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, whatever that might come out to.
Fifty-two thousand.
Fifty-two thousand.
Do I have any comments?
No.
Hold on. Call roll, please.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. Stromdahl?
No.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
No.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Resolution Six, Cooperation Agreement with the Titusville Redevelopment Authority. I'm assuming same comments.
Yeah.
Jeff?
Larry Emerson, with Point West, Mayor Bain, uh, I was kinda used to you reading the resolutions, what they were, and I, I don't really know what was going on, thank you.
Okay. All right, you want me to go back to the last one?
It would like, I would like to hear, I guess, you can say it, really?
No, I just have to figure out which one is which and is back. Okay, Resolution Number Five. Resolution authorizes the Titusville Redevelopment Authority to administer the Community Development Block Grant Program of the Department of Community and Economic Development Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on behalf of the city of Titusville. Am I underwrite one? Okay. Whereas to the council of the city of Titusville is approved and authorized the Titusville Redevelopment Authority to administer the Community Development Block Grant Program of the Department of Community and Economic Development of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Whereas the Titusville Redevelopment Authority has a long record of success with the Department of Community and Economic Development for the administration of grants through several different programs with the Department of Community and Economic Development, and with other departments in the Commonwealth and the federal government. Whereas it is the desire of the council, the city of Titusville, that the Redevelopment Authority handle the administration of all duties and required, requirements of the city's community development block grant, block grant program, now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Titusville, that the mayor of the city of Titusville is hereby authorized and directed to execute this resolution. Okay? Okay. And Resolution Number Six. It's a TRA cooperat-, cooperation agreement. Whereas the city, uh, where council of the city of Titusville has approved and authorized for submission by the Titusville Redevelopment Authority, an, an application for funding by the Department of Community. Whereas the city, uh, where council of the city of Tyusville has approved and authorized for submission by the Tyusville redevelopment authority an application for funding by the Department of Community and Economic Development of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Whereas it is necessary that there be an agreement by, between this city and the Tyusville redevelopment authority whereby the cooperation of this city to undertake certain responsibilities and liabilities, all as set forth in the application agreement to be agreed upon. Now there, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Tyusville that the attached cooperation agreement is hereby approved, uh, and the city of Tyusville be au-, and is authorized to enter into said agreement that the mayor of the city of Tyusville is hereby authorized and directed to execute said agreement on behalf of and as the act of the city.
You're needing a motion on this one now, I, I'm sorry, I, I was still thinking we were.
I'm still reading.
We were, I would make a motion that we adopt resolution number six, the cooperation agreement with TRA.
I guess I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to, uh, entering the cooperation agreement, we'll go back, Jim, you're seeing comments?
Yeah, I have a question here.
In our title here, it talks about CBG grants, okay, and then DCED programs. Were the DCED programs what we used to do for rails to trails?
They could be.
Could be. I didn't have a problem with them doing that, but since this agreement is merging both of them together, then that's my issue.
Thank you. Comments? Call roll, please.
Mr. Crouch?
Oh. I had a couple of, uh, points on your, uh, form of the agreement, at least that, uh, wanted to throw out.
Okay.
I didn't think it was clear on the point of, uh, whether any of these previous programs that did not be taking over, if they'll close them out, finish whatever has to be done for prior years, this seems to be talking only of the new stuff. The other thing I thought was worth considering is whether there are any mechanisms to terminate this agreement, maybe not this council, but some future councils decide to go back to the other direction.
That would seem reasonable. That would seem reasonable, we do go on anything else.
Terminate the current agreement that the city.
But this new agreement, I guess when it's signed, if it had some provision in it that five years from now council decides to go in another direction, they have a way to terminate the agreement by its terms?
If we decided next year to, to go back to the city or to the county or what have you, we, we need something in.
Something in here that said, you know, on six months prior notice or whatever, the city may terminate this agreement.
Should we then, uh, look at amending that, uh, I don't know what the timeframe is, how critical it is for this part of the agreement. Should we maybe table, we've got a motion on the floor now at this point, but, but should we, uh, could I withdraw the motion and do table it until the next meeting with the corrections?
Well, if it's time sensitive, and I don't know whether it is or not, I guess my suggestion would be maybe amend the motion to authorize and approve the agreement subject to the city manager and solicitor's, uh, finalizing.
I'm perfectly fine with that, amending the motion to reflect that.
Did you second that?
I'll reset it, yes.
So this is not, they're amending this?
Yeah, we're amending the motion that basically gonna, Rich is gonna write in here that this agreement could be terminated with six months notice.
Resolution number six would be amended to these changes, everything?
Could be amended, terminated next year.
And we're picking six months as the.
Well, I just, I, I guess maybe we need to talk to them, I don't know how much lead time somebody would need to, uh, separate, do whatever's needed to, to finish up. Probably more time rather than, uh, less than we'd guess, but.
Roger, would you amend your motion again to have the terminations scheduled, uh, as established by the solicitor and city manager? Not, not to exceed six mo-, um, no less than six months or no more than six months, something to that effect?
Um, why don't we just leave the discretion with council and, and what he comes up with up his advice?
Okay.
Uh, yeah, 'cause maybe, maybe there's some regulation that requires us to have a certain date in there.
I'll second, I'll second.
I'll, I'll, or I'll amend that motion.
All right, Diane, what's the motion? I think the motion is that we're authorizing this city solicitor and manager to, uh, meet with the redevelopment authority and set up the timeframe for termination and that, uh, and, and that termination could happen. Does that do it, Rich?
I think that does.
Okay, all right.
Is this agreement for twenty nineteen CBG monies or the twenty twenty monies?
Oh, twenty nineteen.
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty. Twenty twenty.
Twenty nineteen.
Correct.
Twenty nineteen.
It'll start with twenty nineteen, but you won't get twenty nineteen money until it's twenty twenty.
But, but the city has already worked on twenty nineteen monies, right?
No, twenty eighteen would also go to the redevelopment authority, uh, for the, uh, portion for clearance and demolition. So there won't be a clean break in years because the demolition money we have, if we wanted to use it on the Diamond Street property, isn't enough for that, you have to combine it with future years. So to keep it hanging with the city wouldn't, wouldn't make sense, they could utilize that money.
Okay, so that answers your point, well, here, before we go too far, let's vote on this motion. The motion is that for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty money, or program year. Correct, Diane? Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, overlap.
I, I think the, I think the agreement should include twenty eighteen, that's what Lori and I discussed, that we would have a break from the fire department renovation. And then we'd still have the money for the demolition that they could then take control of.
Roger?
Yes. Uh, I, I would amend then the, uh, motion for the third time to include the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty monies and going forward.
And I will second, second, second.
All right, any more discussion?
One question that that brought up in my mind is then, is this similar then to the way when, when the city took it back over from TRA, did you have some kind of, you must've had some overlap then that you had to deal with?
They had started the process for the twenty sixteen application, and then I wrote the twenty sixteen actual application that was turned in. So there's processes that start at the beginning of the year.
So while there may then be, uh, project, uh, admin monies because of your carrying some back to the TRA, would there also be a portion of the eighteen percent that the city keeps and the portion that goes to the TRA, how's that?
For future years, um, they would control that, for twenty eighteen, the previous council already voted to put the admin money toward the fire department project.
Okay.
So there would not be admin money for twenty eighteen.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions? Call roll, please.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
No.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. Strongbow?
No.
Operational audit. Roger had asked for this to be put on the agenda.
I believe the, uh, city manager had a recommendation or some discussion.
Yeah, we had the opportunity to speak with Richard Lealova Junior, uh, he is the deputy secretary for DCED. Uh, DCED is the Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development, um, he can provide a, provide the city of Tyusville with an independent review on such things as compliance, operations, and finances. Uh, I, I would like council to give you permission to have a representative from DCED, uh, present to council, uh, some of the things that they can, um, some options for the city as far as, uh, an independent review.
Basically, uh, what this is, we had talked at a previous meeting, it may have been the work session, about, uh, looking into having an operational audit and what the kind of cost would be involved for the city. Uh, when we had our, uh, Pennsylvania Municipal League meetings over the weekend, uh, they, we, we had asked about, uh, this audit. And, um, that's when the deputy secretary suggested to us that we utilize this program because the state would cover half of the cost. And then with any recommendations that were, that would come out of it, uh, if they were recommendations that the city followed up with to implement, the state would also pay fifty percent of the cost of implementing those changes. Um, and, uh, so that's, that's, rather than going out in the open market and trying to find somebody, uh, which could cost us, uh, tens of thousands of dollars to conduct. This, I believe they mentioned, would be around fifteen thousand dollars cost to the city. But, uh, I believe also that, uh, they're willing to come present the, present it to the council further. I also had, um, Attorney Winkler put together a, uh, resolution regarding this that would, would be required in order for us to go forward. So, uh, I believe that's been supplied to all council members as well.
So your recommendation tonight is to have someone come in and give us a presentation?
Okay.
Jim? No comment? Ron?
I have no problem with the presentation.
Roger?
No.
Hear a motion to authorize the, uh, city manager to, uh, schedule a presentation at the earliest convenience of the department.
So.
Your second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Mr. Frazier?
Yeah.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Strongbow?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Tyusville nonprofit intergovernmental agreement.
There really isn't anything on this to discuss, I just passed out, uh, kind of, uh, a framework of ideas for an agreement that I would ask that the council authorize the solicitor to formalize. Uh, if you have anything to add to it, do so, but basically what it is, uh, is getting all of the players in, in the city, whether it be tourism, economic development, uh, volunteer organizations that, that play a role in, in making our city function. Uh, to come together, uh, in agreement to support one another on the projects and, uh, rather than be competing with one another.
You wanna, you wanna give council time to take a look at this and then come back maybe Monday?
Come, come back and, um, that'll also give us time to have these other groups look at it and give their opinions as well.
Do we need a motion on that or no?
I don't think we need anything.
Resolution of recognized organizations.
That's, that's related to the same thing, so that can, we can table until after.
The Oil Creek Township off water agreement. Mr. Emerson, do I have to read all this? But I will read the beginning of it, okay. This agreement is made and entered into, uh, effect as, uh, whatever day we do this, between the city of Tyusville, a third-class city, and the township of Oil Creek, uh, the water line ownership, city shall install meter pit, an eight-inch, uh, meter provided by the township with township to reimburse city for the cost of said work. Township shall at its sole cost and expense install an eight-inch water line within the township and shall assume all the cost of connection by the city of said line. Dropping down to number six, I'm just trying to hit that, uh, highlights for you, Mr. Emerson. Township shall pay the city for water delivered at the city municipal line, a sum equal to ninety-five percent of the prevailing rate charged users within the city per one thousand gallons. They'll be charged for a readiness-to-serve charge for a six-inch meter.
How much is that charge? Sorry. The readiness-to-serve.
What?
How much is the readiness-to-serve charge for that meter?
Two hundred and some dollars.
A month or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Other than the legal jargon Rich puts in it, I think that's the highlights. I guess the, the question I would have is just because we don't have a readiness-to-serve charge for an eight-inch meter.
We charge it for six, right? Diane, we charge it for six because we've never done an eight.
Why don't we do an eight?
Yeah.
They're, they're the first.
Somebody's gotta be the first.
Sure. I think it was a timing thing, Rich, because it took two ordinances, two readings to be able to get the eight-inch charge onto Article one ninety-one.
I guess, I, I guess, I, my comment would be, maybe we need to, you know, I don't have a problem with that, Rich, but maybe what we ought to do is pull out our meter charges and reevaluate them, and if we do have meters that we're not charging them right for, look at them. And if we're charging too much for some, look at those, it might be something we can.
Is this our first eight that we did?
Uh, there might be something at the opportunity part, but they're willing to set up that.
Okay.
So, that's my other comment, uh, but, go ahead.
Continue on with this thing here, okay, so, this basically is the same agreement that we've had before, right? Okay, so, if you're going to take a look into an eight, okay, so how, this is good for three years? So in three years, you might hit them up with an eight-inch charge. Yeah? If not before.
Before, when you guys did this agreement three years ago, uh, what was the meter that you were gonna put in there originally?
They, uh, Diane's gonna have to help me with this, uh, we went out to, to the, basically the line, okay, and it was because we're on a fire, the tractor was close. And so therefore, all we could do is we put an eight-inch meter pit in, right?
But you lowered the, you lowered the fee down?
No, we didn't lower it, they just never had one, we just charged them at six, at a six-inch rate, because we didn't have a, an eight-inch rate at that time. And I believe as Diane and maybe Rich can fill in here, is we had a couple resolutions or whatever ordinances we had to go through, and it wasn't, let, let's just say they needed to get that new building built out there in that township, and there wasn't enough time to go all the way through. So, I don't have a problem if, if we need to create an eight, it's just I don't want these folks, if they're signing an agreement for a six, and all something, something's just sprung on them, that's all.
Well, no, I, I, I would agree with that, yeah, yeah, but I think if we're gonna get involved in eight-inch meters, maybe we need to review. maybe we need to review our meter charges and come up with an eight-inch meter.
Is that something that the Public Works Director could investigate and recommend back to us?
I think so.
I think so, I'd prefer that.
Any further discussion on the water supply agreement?
And Don, do you remember if the city didn't charge Oil Creek Township for the first year for the readiness-to-serv? I thought there was something in there where they didn't charge them the readiness-to-serv for the first year.
We did not. There was a agreement, there was a resolution from twenty sixteen for giving that charge because Tractor Spile wasn't even built. So they would've been paying that charge.
Yeah, they would've been paying money without any water being drawn.
But there's, I mean, there's property owners in Titusville that pay a fee with the water drawn, so. Well, I.
Well, they're gonna be charged now.
The, the construction wasn't there, so, okay.
Thank you.
Jim, any comments on the agreement? Roger?
No.
John?
I think I'm good with this.
Okay. Call a roll, please. No, I need a motion.
I'd like to make the motion if I may, Mayor.
Yep. You are.
Sounds like it.
Jim's second. Call a roll, please.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Stromdahl?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
All right. John had asked that item I, IT, we put on the agenda for this evening? John?
So we just got done at a three-day, two-day conference, and one of the big issues that came up was social media, elected officials, and, and our, how our lives change when we become public service. Now we have to watch what we put on social media and email, et cetera. So based on that, I have some questions to ask the manager, and I don't know if he has answers, we can put them to Rich or Diana. A few weeks ago, we asked for, well, one of the things, by the way, is you have to be very careful when you have a Facebook page, if I start a Facebook page that says Council of Crouch, I have to be very careful what I put on there, et cetera. So do you have a copy of the letter that you sent to the former mayor about her Facebook page that says Mayor of Titusville?
I did send her a letter, I went and saw her in person.
And what's the, what, what have you reached so far with her?
Well, I don't go on social media, so I don't know if it's.
It's still there, there right now.
My understanding was the reference to mayor would be changed to former mayor.
It's still, it's still is based off of the city's Facebook page. Okay, I don't know what that means. That means if, if somebody sends a message to that page, it, it sends that message to one oh seven North Franklin Street. It, it, it has that in the.
We got rid of them.
It took about a while. I'm not, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about if somebody was from out of town, sees that page, and click on that page and go to send a message, it says Mayor of Titusville, one oh seven North Franklin. That's all I'm saying, okay? The next question is, who is or who are our city IT people? Who's our IT person for the city of Titusville? Diana? Okay? And does the city of Titusville have a policy on archiving emails? I'm not sure. As public officials, as public officials, that's one of the things I'm gonna be asking for tonight. As public officials, we should have an outside entity archiving our emails of any emails that have anything to do, any city records, any emails, and that go between public works, all those things should be archived. They shouldn't be deleted, because that would give us all trouble. And the next, next question before I make a proposal here is, who are the names of the administrators of our city of titusville.gov page?
Just me.
Okay. So as of right now, we have one person in our city, our financial director, that is doing IT, or is our IT point person, okay? So I think that we need to have, I think that we need to, or maybe this bridge needs to work on and we need to vote on it another time, but we need, right now, so right now, if I'm, I'm hearing you correctly, we do not have a policy in the city of Titusville for archiving any emails. So all the emails from the previous administration that might be referred to us, because I know there was a lot of them referred to us, could all be deleted tonight. Am I right? Because you're the IT person, if you wanted to.
I could not, I could not delete them.
You cannot delete it?
No. I can, I can remove an account, but the account, you have email on your cellphone, so now it's on your cellphone. If you also open it up on your computer, it's on your computer. Things are not archived to the email server more than seven days.
That's, okay, so we need to change that, see? That's.
It's actually a violation of state and federal.
Yeah, that's, we could really get ourselves in a big loss for it, so.
We don't have enough space for that, just so you know.
Well, then, well, I have to get, we would have to investigate the cost. So, so you're saying hypothetically, if one of our former council people or one of our former managers did something and wrote an illegal email, that email's gone, because it's only on the server for seven days. That's a pretty sweet deal. That's wrong, it's, 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 it's illegal. So I would like us to come up with some sort of a policy that we have some kind of external, externally archiving all city records, you know, our city electronic records, emails of council, of inter-office emails, they need to be archived somewhere, because that's a right-to-know thing.
Sure.
Which, which addresses would you use, John? Email addresses?
You don't wanna use your personal.
No, not our personal.
If you use your personal, that opens your entire personal email.
Not, no, no, no.
Oh, I see.
Our policy, no, our policy needs to be anything that, anything that has to do with the city, at the city of Titusville, or do you think it has to do with everything?
Anything received or sent through a titusvilleba.gov email address.
Right, not your personal accounts, but anything that goes through.
My point is, John, is in one of the emails I was reading, reading over.
Yes.
That, that was just recently released, so I was, okay. It had all, all your personal emails and all that.
Yes, but they're only archived and what went through the server. And I'm really surprised that we don't, that we have it set up right now, that you're saying all emails more than seven days old are gone.
Gone from the, the actual city server, yeah, we don't have nearly enough space on what we have now.
So if I wanted them, where would they be available?
No, unless you went to a former council member or.
I think we, I think we need a policy on that, but I think we need to, maybe our IT person needs to be somebody outside.
So you have to upgrade your whole computer system, do you?
No, no, you could actually go to a different host, have somebody outside of me post the email and back up to a cloud.
I think we need to be legally right. Huh? That's it?
No, I'm just, just me and my old me, you know, we'll just put it on a clock, you know? That just seems.
Cheap, it's cheap space to put stuff. And we don't have it in the building where, you know, fire or something.
I know, you say thank you before you sign.
Right, yeah, but it doesn't really, it sounds to me like it, it doesn't matter up till now, because it's gone in seven days.
Good.
So I, I, I'll make a motion that we, I don't know, I need to do it as a motion, but that we have a resolution that Rich and the, and our interim manager look into coming up with a policy concerning our city records so that we're meeting the state guidelines.
Jim?
Yeah, that's one.
Don?
I'm looking at it.
I'm looking into it.
I don't, I don't think we need a motion if we, Roger, you agree?
Yeah, I.
I think we just instruct the city manager and the city solicitor to.
Thank you, Greg.
Some bads or something, you just wanna be the point.
Yep.
Pardon me?
Thank you. Thank you, we've needed that, we've needed it for years.
Good, good. Just, just to tag along with that, do we have a social media policy that our employees have to follow? I know, I know, you know, a lot of companies, if you, if you work for a company and you go out and do something, they can come back at you. Do we have something like that on the books?
We do.
We do?
We do. There's one difference, so, between government and private employer, as you know, we're subject to the First Amendment, private employers.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just saying, from the seminar we just went to, when you talk to the former mayor again, you may want to tell her to take down almost everything that's on her Facebook page, because most of what's on her Facebook page, when she was in the capacity of a public official, is suitable, is slander, and it needs to come down there because that, she's liable as a former public servant.
Now, if I send an email to Diana or to Neil asking for information, and they send me back information, do I have to keep that?
You shouldn't delete any city email.
Yeah, but isn't it, in an archive system, whether Denny deletes it or not, it's still archived?
Correct.
On a different server it is?
Yes.
Not what we have currently.
So if somebody came in to do forensic work, they, they could find it all in archive, not, not right now.
So I don't have to say it?
Well, there's a set of regulations by the Pennsylvania Historical Museum Commission that controls municipal document retention. Routine correspondence doesn't have to be kept beyond its useful life, whatever that is. So if you sent an email to the city, oh, and asked, what's, is the sun shining outside? There'd be no reason to keep an email like that for any length of time at all.
The answer's no, anyhow.
So I sent, I sent an email to Neil today, asking for a copy of what you two gentlemen dealt with, the senior sent it. He sent it to me, I copied it, I deleted.
It's okay, if it's our, eventually if it's our question.
The actual recommendation at the conference was that all city business should be conducted on a dedicated device only for city business, and that the city should provide that device to all the council.
To all the council members. No, seriously, they should provide, they should provide us some sort of a, an iPad or something that we do all of our correspondence on, so that if it ever gets, if, if we ever get hit with a lawsuit, alls you do is hand it to them. You shouldn't do it on your phones at all, they.
That would eliminate all this.
It would.
Yes, it would.
It would eliminate the personal email addresses too, and, you know, I have residents now that are clicking email all of city council, and it's emailing your .govs. But I don't think all of you use your .govs right now.
I can't even say, oh.
Tell him, Neil, he's got yours up in twenty-five seconds.
All right, I'll bring my, I'll bring my Chrome in, you can set up.
No, no, you're not gonna do that. You're gonna wait till we're issued one, because you don't want all of everything else on.
All right, Mr. Ollie?
Yeah, I just had a question on John's topic there. If the IT director set up the email addresses, wouldn't the IT director then have access to those email addresses still? They should have the username and password to access those.
The passwords, I usually set up the passwords, and then everybody that has a city email has the opportunity to call the technology providers, CS Technologies, to update their password.
But if they didn't update it, if they were issued by the city, and most people probably didn't update their, the password, unless they were, you know, nervous or something, it probably could be checked into, you probably could access those emails today. I mean, unless Diana deleted them, but I don't know, you know? I mean, those accounts should still be there unless they were deleted.
They're public information, so they're available, they're the right to know.
So if, so, okay, so on that note, if I ask for emails from a year ago, they would be there?
No, we just went, we just went through the seven-day.
Okay.
Deleted for seven days, but we do not have the space.
On, on the city side, but on their side, unless they went in and deleted them on their personal account, and the city has the username and password, they could just log in under that, and they should all be there.
We'll get it figured out. Public input.
I have one other question.
Your, your second line.
Thank you.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes, I wanna congratulate council on their quickness in the safety and health issues on Diamond Street, I mean, it's like immediate. Thank you. Also, I wanna bring up a safety and health issue. And that's the sidewalks, they don't get shovel down. It's the same people all the time. They never shovel them at all during the winter. Sun comes out, they melt a little bit, they get icy, or snow glues on them. You can't hardly walk on them. How do you handle this going forward? Who's responsibility is that? I know there's a law, you're supposed to keep them clean at least once a day when it snows. Why can't we get the sidewalk shovelers?
Good. Patrick?
Good point.
Mr. Ollie?
Yeah, I had a question about right-to-know requests. What is required for a right-to-know request, you know?
Complete the form that the city has.
I mean, but what information that the city has would require a right-to-know request?
Rich? Anything, would it?
Well, anything that's not exempted from right-to-know. There are about eighteen separate exemptions of material that's not subject.
Is there a list of the material that's not exempted?
No, it's more, the law presumes it's open unless it falls in one of the categories that are not open.
Well, so who makes the determination on?
Is there a specific?
Well, how about the, the meeting audio? Prior to twenty twenty, in order to get the meeting audio, you needed a right-to-know request for that meeting audio. I always had to fill one out for. Now I see there's, you know, four meeting audios on there already, and I didn't see any right-to-know requests filed on the city's site for twenty twenty.
So you're talking about the audio that our meetings are taped?
That's right, that's recorded. I've always had to file a right-to-know request for that. When I got on there today to print out the agenda, I noticed that there were four, one from each meeting on there, and I did not see a right-to-know request filed for those. Is that something that? So you're complimenting the change. Well, I'd like to change if that's what it is. If you don't have to file a right-to-know request, but I called two weeks ago and asked about the taxes for the city that's paid by TRA, and I was told I had to file a right-to-know request, but I shouldn't have to file a right-to-know request, you know? But you said I did, Neil said I did. So I'd like to know what is required for a right-to-know request and what isn't required.
Rich?
It's a general rule, if you want information from the city, you file a right-to-know request.
For everything?
Yes.
That doesn't make sense. Now, you can go everywhere else to get information, at public, from the county, no problems. There's a lot of stuff that's available to the public. You know, I would just like to see, you know, if they say it has an employee's name on it or some security number or something like that, you know, I could see that.
So Jim, you're saying it appears that the policy changed at the beginning of the year?
It could have, I don't know.
I would say we oughta check, city manager and Rich consult together, because if, if there's latitude in what we're allowed to just have as public without a right-to-know, I think we oughta make it as freely available as we're legally allowed to. And, and if there's policy changes that need made in-house, then I think we need to address it.
And something that somebody brought up to me is, when you fill out a right-to-know request in the city right now, and it comes, goes up on our city website, so let's say I fill one out, somebody can click on that, they see my name, they see my address, they see my email, they see whatever information I put on there, so maybe we could blacken out some of the stuff and just say who it was or whatever, instead of, instead of saying, putting their email address, because then I could be emailing Darlene if I don't like her or, you know, because I found her thing on there, but she filled out a right-to-know. That's my error.
Okay. All right.
It's technical, John?
Yeah. That's my, me on a computer.
Anybody else, public input? Review minute meetings, meeting minutes.
You're looking at me?
Yeah. How do you wanna handle this?
I, first of all, would like to compliment Diana. I, first of all, would like to compliment Diana on the detailed minutes from the last meeting. There was more meeting notes from the last meeting than there has been for the last year. And I like it and I think that's the way it should be. And I think as long as those are the kind of meeting minutes we're getting, there's no need to review the same meeting at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Any comments, guys?
All right, it's a lot for her to do that. I'm just wondering whether, do you have the meeting notes and the synopsis and you're going to have the audio there if you need to be heard?
But the audio is never part of the permanent record. And the, what is written is what gets archived at the library, it's what gets archived online. To me, it's, it's the permanent record.
Comments by Mayor Council, Jim?
No.
Nothing? Don?
No, thank you.
Roger?
Nope.
Unfortunately, I have a couple things. I'd ask Neil to get ahold of Central Towers. We had mentioned when we first got together that we'd like to have a council meeting at Central Towers, Billy Brown. And he's going to be meeting with Terry Kerr to try to get that set up for our next work, next. Seventeenth meeting. Now, our next meeting, next Monday, and I hope we can get some good press out of this, is going to be a work session. We're going to have the auditors here and then we're going to open it up to the public. We're in the process, we're just be, at the beginning stages of trying to set up our short, long-range goals and we want public input on what the public may want to see in our community. So, we invite individuals, we invite organizations. Whoever wants to come, they'll be given their time, we'll take their, everything that they give us down and then we'll try to incorporate that into the city's plan of action for the next two, three, five years. So, that's all I have.
That's Monday.
Monday.
But you said this, we may go to Central Towers on the seventeenth?
On the seventeenth.
That's a voting session.
Yeah, that's what, next Monday is the work session here.
So, they get to yell and scream at Central Towers?
All right, somebody make it.
I'm going to the last one.
I'm going with the wing chair.
I'll second it.
Anybody opposed?
No.
Motion carries, Diana?
Thank you.